Call the City Council meeting in order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Coles.
Here.
Alderman Suback.
Here.
Alderman Knite.
Here.
Alderman Pizik.
Here.
Alderman Winger.
Here.
Alderman Wesley.
See you.
Alderman Tullman.
Here.
Mayor Jackson.
Here.
Corinne, being President, would you stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of September 21, 2006? Who moved? Is there a second?
Second.
On the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Bills, Alderman, Winger?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion to approve the list of bills dated October 5, 2006, for $283,059.80.
Is there a second?
Wait a minute.
Alderman Coles?
Yeah, there's supposed to be an addition of $15,345,086 to that.
I didn't get that. Okay, well then, I'll amend my motion.
The correct figure should be?
298,405,66.
And are you seconding Alderman Coles?
Yes, I'll second.
All right. Anything further on the question?
Question.
Alderman Wesley.
I have a couple of questions on the bills, page five. The landscaping, John Deere landscaping, $3,131.75. And then it's his landscaping service. I know that wasn't for a tri- well, not for the landscaping company, but...
Mr. Home?
Thank you. Yeah, both of those were for the irrigation system for the triangle. The second one, the initial one was our initial purchase, and the second one for $229 was additional fittings and whatnot that we needed to purchase.
The other question will be on page seven, the citywide leak survey. Well, fresh my mind on that one.
Survey.
That was a budgeted item this year, and we did do a citywide leak survey. A full report will be forthcoming to council regarding our accountability between our DuPage County billing and our billing, but this is part of that investigation. The results were that we have no major leaks in town.
Mr. Williams?
Yes, this is part of the study we're doing on the water billing. We're still trying to find out what happened to that 15 percent. And what you normally would do as a municipality from time to time is have an outside vendor come in and do a leak survey, and we were happy to report that we didn't find any major leaks. We're still trying to track that down, and we will have a full report on that.
Okay. The other question I have on page six, maher lumber, since when do we buy jeans for employee?
That's out of the uniform. Each employee, like each employee in my department gets $500 a year for their uniform allowance.
Well, as I see, I think we need to address that issue because simple reason is where I work, they provide us the uniforms, the shirts and that, but here, we buying jeans, like blue jeans, and they could wear them wherever they want. So more or less, we are clothing an employee in the city that could wear clothes wherever he want with jeans.
Mr. Williams?
I mean, I could see, I could see if it's t-shirts that we purchased with our logo on it, but safety boots, I could see that, jacket with our logos on it, stuff that they can't wear out in the public for their own personal use. Far from concerned, it's jeans. I know it's only $86, but eventually it's going to add up if we're going to allow this to continue.
Mr. Williams?
Alderman Wesley, you bring up a good point. This has always been the standard practice in the department, and throughout all the past years, this has been allowed. We have been tightening up these types of things, and one of the ways you do this is to limit the number of jeans, to limit the type to a certain area. But this was a negotiated benefit that has been on the books for many years. We are tightening it up, and we are watching for exactly what you're talking about.
Mr. Home?
Also, many years ago, the city did have a uniform service, and I understand that they used that uniform service, and everyone wore a set uniform. And I don't know when they went away from that, but at one point in time, they obviously went away from that and then went to a uniform allowance.
Anything further, Alderman Suback?
I do commend the employees for shopping locally and making sure the tax dollars stay in Wooddale, so that is a positive.
Roll call.
Alderman Coles.
Yes.
Alderman Suback.
Yes.
Alderman Knite.
Yes.
Alderman Pizik.
Yes.
Alderman Shaki.
Yes.
Alderman Winger.
Yes.
Alderman Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Tullman.
Yes.
That passes. Do any citizens wish to address the City Council this evening? If so, if you go over the podium and give us your name and address, please?
Yes, good evening. My name is Patricia Stoll, S-T-O-L-L, address 145 South Cedar, Wooddale. And I'm coming to the horse's mouth, so to speak, to get a few questions answered, if you please. It has to do with the property at 121 South Cedar, which is under construction and has been an issue before the building zoning committee and the board for several months. Now, as I understand it, culminating on the 22nd of last month, in their applying for a new vote on the variance that they had asked for, the north-south variance. And that, as I understand it, although, all right, throughout the neighborhood, there's a lot of confusion about what is the status on this property. It was not clearly stated, even though we taped and watched the meeting, we still have some questions, so. First off, the public was not advised that this was going to be on the docket. We thought that the variance issue had been resolved. In fact, had, it was an open, yes, they had a variance issue, and we're a little surprised to find out that this was coming back up before, or had come back up before the City Council last month, at which we understood it to be denied by a majority of one vote on the 22nd. My question, on behalf of myself and the neighborhoods, how dead is dead? Is this over, or is this an issue that can come up again? We're getting mixed messages when we ask various people. Is it dead?
I have multiple people volunteering to answer. My understanding was it was up on a motion to reconsider, and it lost on the motion to reconsider, which cannot be brought up again.
Alderman Suback?
I disagree. That's not what it was up. It was originally, when you attended the last meeting, where we had many of the neighbors there, that was at the committee level. In the committee level, it's the same people, but it's sitting in a different body. It failed at the committee level, and then it went to council, and it was never a vote at the full council. It got continued a couple times. Because it was such an issue that was very divided, we wanted to make sure we had a full council present to vote on it, and we eventually, the homeowner said, "I need a vote," and it was last week, or the 29th, the 26th, whatever date you said. My understanding was that was a vote at the council. I don't foresee anybody bringing a motion to reconsider, but I don't think it was ever failed at council level, and we always needed a super majority in order to override the zoning board.
Do you understand how we could be a little confused in this? In short, is this going to arise again without any notice to us, the neighbors, who are directly involved in this issue?
If Alderman Suback is correct, and that was the first time it was voted on by the City Council, the motion to reconsider must be done tonight, or it is dead. Alderman Tullman, did you want to comment?
I was just going to concur with what the mayor just said. It would have to be reconsidered tonight in order for it to come back, and there's not enough votes to pass that. So it's, you know, you're asking, is it dead? Yes, it's dead.
It's dead.
The only way, the only way it could come back to council would be if those folks decided to go back through the whole process again, to, you know, go back to the zoning board, and then ultimately back to the committee, and then finally back to us, but that's the only way.
Would that then entail us again being notified by mail?
Yes, it would.
And a sign out in front?
Yes, it would. Yes, it would.
All right. My second question might be more appropriately directed to Mr. Noick, but the question stands. For this property, has a building permit been issued? Are there plans on public record, house plans on public record? Because there's a lot of scuttlebutt going around that they have no building permit, and there is a very hard time getting plans.
All direction, all questions?
Which would be against everything that I understand in the building, city building codes. Okay.
Pursuant to our rules and regulations, all questions are directed to myself as chairman of the City Council.
I'm sorry.
Nevertheless, Mr. Noick, would you answer that, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, there is a building permit for the property, and yes, there are plans available, and my suggestion would be that Mrs. Stoll call the Building Safety Division, make an appointment with Mr. Forrest, and he'd be more than happy to go over the file with her.
Roger, can you move the microphone down for Ms. Stoll, too, so she doesn't?
I think I'm done.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so they are on public record, as I understand it. All right. And I guess, how would I go about, and not just myself, but anybody else in the neighborhood, or anybody on the committees here, because there was some dispute last week, or last month on the 22nd about what, just exactly where this house sat on the foundation, whether it was on the foundation, whether it was three inches in or one foot out. How does this get verified? And that's my last question.
That is a matter of public record, and if you do make an appointment with the Building Department, they'll pull the file out for you.
Thank you.
And show you that whether they do or do not comply.
Thank you very much.
Very good. Anyone else wish to address the City Council this evening? I do have one written communique, which is not good news, from Commonwealth Edison. And the Summons Substances, they are advising us as to the rate hikes, so that we can plan for our budget, and it's anticipated that streetlights will go up based on last year's usage from $61,325 to $74,892, and for use of the pumps, from $189,850 up to $246,167. So we're looking about a $60,000 impact on the budget with the rate hikes.
Alderman Suback?
Mr. Mayor, I think you also received, or Roger did, and it's on the council received tonight, a written communique from gem building contractors, and the request, I'm making the request to the mayor, is to place this on the City Council agenda, the next City Council meeting. Gem Builders is Park Place of Wooddale, the 12-lot subdivision on Timber Court, and they'd like to come forward and ask, make these requests. So, Mr. Mayor, if you could place this on the City Council agenda for the next City Council meeting.
I think Mr. Williams was going to handle this under his report.
Tonight?
I think he was going to report that we had received this letter.
Okay, but I think the builder would like the opportunity to come and plead his case.
I'm just questioning whether this should be done in committee, and then come to council or go direct to council. Mr. Williams?
I was going to ask the council for some direction if it should even be considered before we moved it to any committee.
Alderman Suback?
I think, again, to give the builder the opportunity to be heard, I wouldn't want to waste the time at committee level. I'd rather have, I mean, council is a time for public input. Let him, as any other resident, come and speak his piece on this issue, and at that point, at the next City Council meeting, we can decide if we want to refer to committee after that point.
Alderman Wesley?
All right, I received this letter, too, tonight, and the question I have to, in what, he's asking for change and to take that straight all the way through. Would that also have to be notified with letters in the neighborhood that it's being changed or not in the building code?
Certainly any resident, whether they be a citizen or a businessman, has a right to address the City Council, so this can be heard at the next City Council meeting. The builder can make his presentation, then most likely that will be referred back to committee for the council to debate and decide whether they want, what they want to do with this matter. But certainly has the right to come to a City Council meeting. Under Mayor's report, first item is Gallow PUD for the Miano property. They've asked for the right, as we've granted other builders, to make a preliminary presentation to us and get our input, whether this project is feasible or not. And, Peter, are you doing the presentation?
Right now.
Before we get into this presentation, as long as you're here, though, could you give us a brief update on Bristol Court?
My name is Peter Vodopoulos, Polte Homes. As far as the Miano property is concerned, as you know, Gallow International and Polte Homes have partnered with Bristol Park Development, and as they are looking at the concept plans for mixed-use, a plan for the Miano piece, they consulted with us, who provided some input. At this stage, we've got an interest in participating if the city finds this to be a feasible project.
Actually, I was looking, as long as you're here, if you give us a report on the other development on Devon, how that is going for you.
Our thing is going quite well. I don't know how detailed of an update you'd like, but I think about half of the homes are occupied at this point. It's nearly sold out, I believe we have 12 units left for sale. It's been a very successful project for Polte, and I'm not sure what else I can really tell you about it.
All right, if you'd proceed, whoever, with the presentation on the Miano site.
Good evening. My name is Mark Dudek. I'm head the project development group for Gallow International, and with me presenting tonight will also be Mary Ann Gallow with Gallow International. Tonight, we're looking at presenting to the board here, council, a mixed-use development at the, on Wooddale Road, just south of Thorndale. Mary Ann, can you move the slide over just a little bit? The presentation is going to follow the package you probably already have received, and so you can follow along if you like. The color's a little washed out on the overhead, I'm not sure exactly why, but we'll try to work with the best we can. The site that's in question is right here, it's Wooddale, this is Thorndale, north is up. Site is approximately 7.68 acres, it's zone B2 currently. We're looking at doing a mixed-use, which is going to retail, and multifamily on it. Could you go to next slide, Mary Ann? It shouldn't, oh, is this one working better? Oh. No, thank you. This might help show a little bit more. What we've got here is a residential portion here, and the retail portion on this point here. The site is basically broken into two portions of, the residential portion is going to be about six, a little bit over six acres, and the commercial parcel is planned to be about 1.32 acres. We have, on the residential area, it's proposed R8, so we'll have to go through some rezoning based upon the current zoning now. The density proposed is 13.3 units per acre, which allow us to have 85 units per R8 zoning, which we'd like to go to. We could do a max up to 18.8 units. So we'd actually could get actually 120 units on this lot, based upon the current ordinance. Maximum lot coverage is 50 percent. We currently have at this scheme, 59 percent, so we will have to go in for variance for 9 percent overage. We have areas for retention. We have access to add retention to the existing here, plus there is existing retention that we can take advantage there. And if that does not work as enough for us, we can put underground, as well as we have area here, we could add some to it if necessary. As well as for the retail center, it's basically 14,000 square feet. It has 83 parking spaces, required by code. It only requires 57, and lot coverage max for that would be 90 percent. We're at 78 percent now. Could you go to next slide, please? We included this slide in the package, just because, I know it's a little hard to see here, it's basically to show the scheme of working with alleys. Alleys are 22 feet wide, according to code, that's the ordinance in Wooddale. We wanted to show the apparatus that'd be necessary to make it through this subdivision. I did check with the local fire prevention group here, talked to Mr. Snyder there, he gave me the information on the actual vehicle that would be handling a facility such as this, would be that particular vehicle down there, and you can see, we do meet the turning rates requirements for this particular community. As for, if we go to next slide, Mary Ann? This is just the concept of kind of looking, just real quick, what, we're looking at the elevations for the multifamily area, very similar to the Bristol Park. And then, you want to show the retail? And this is just a concept of what we'd like to envision somewhat for the retail, it's not the exact size and fit to the plan, but it's a good idea what we'd like to show for our concept for the retail center. And at that point, it kind of concludes my presentation. Can I answer any questions?
Alderman Wesley?
All right. According to what you did, the presentation is going 85 units, right?
Yes, sir.
And the retail is only going to be a little over acre?
Correct.
All right. Well, I have a hard, that is our last big parcel up on Thorndale Road there, okay? With Western Access coming in that area, number one, I think there's a better place for more retail up there, or more, certainly than 85 units. To me, 85 units is just way condensed too much. Okay, so, I mean...
You would rather see more retail there than residential there?
Yes. Because that's a main drag. I'm sorry.
Right, right.
I mean...
But it's not a prime A site for retail.
Well, once Elgin O'Hare comes through there, don't tell me it ain't.
Right, but, well, that's once it happens. I'm not saying it's not going to happen, I...
We know it's going to happen.
Sure.
We know it's going to happen. And for us to go ahead and tell you that you could go ahead and build 85 townhomes up there, and only give us an acre of retail, I'm sorry. There's no way I would go with 85 townhomes up there, because that's too many up there. I want more retail up there. It's fair enough, we get a bank up by Polte now that I didn't want up there at all, but I think we are entitled up there to more retail, because that is our last big partial to get our retail up there. I mean, you could argue back and forth that down the line it might not happen.
Sure, I understand.
We know it's going to happen.
Yes, I agree with you. It is going to happen, absolutely. I'm not arguing that point. Yes, it will happen.
Alderman Tullman?
I think one thing you need to understand upfront is that several years ago, we rezoned that property and went through a lawsuit over that property to have it rezoned to B2, and to turn around and rezone it now to an R8, I don't think so. I mean, first off, when I look at, when I look at the plan, and I've seen this before, okay, it's way too dense. It's just way too dense. There's, you know, you don't even have streets for the townhomes. You're talking about alleyways or alleys, and when you start crowding that many homes into that little area, I mean, that's not what we want for the future of the community. When we allowed the one at Devon and, you know, and Wooddale Road, it was a little bit different, because that was at our farthest border, okay? What Alderman Wesley was talking about as far as that, the Wooddale or the Irving, Thorndale, I'm sorry, becoming part of the Western Access, I mean, I would think, with your experience and with your company's experience, that you folks would be looking long-term at that, and at what that would mean for you, not for the quick, yeah, get my, you know, get my bucks right now, okay, on this property. Because, you know, it's, yes, if we approved it, you can make big money on it today, but what would it do for the city long-term? And I think that's what we, as councilmen, have to look at, is what are we looking at long-term for the city? And, I mean, I've already stated my opinion on this once before, that I wasn't really sold on this idea, and I'm going to reiterate it here publicly, that I can't, in good conscience, I could not justify bringing or allowing 85 townhomes, I mean, that are going to be literally crammed on top of each other with no open space whatsoever. I mean, because you're talking about, the one green spot you have on the property there, you're talking about possibly having to use it as water retention.
Correct.
We're, you know, we have, and I can take you to the site, or you can go there yourself, there's a place over, right off of Division Street, right off of Wooddale Road, it's behind a little shopping center, it's just a little circle that former council, okay, previous council years ago, approved. If I'd have been on this council then, there ain't no way that that would have been approved, because those people are right on top of each other. I don't think that that is really in the best interest of the city, you know, I mean, at this time. I'm sorry, I just could not, in good conscience, I can't go for it.
Alderman Suback?
The property is currently zone B2. The idea behind that zoning was to get, generate some type of sales tax out of there. Besides the density, it is too dense, but I think just the fact that you're looking for residential up there. Residential for us is a strain on the police force, it's a strain on public works in general, it's a strain on city services, and also becomes a strain on the schools. Right now, currently from the Polte site at Devon and Wooddale Road, when I look back at that, I mean, it's a good project, it was a good product, but, you know, we probably sold out too short for that, because we have an island out there of residential that this winter our police are going to be going out to, our city service trucks are going to be plowing back there, and, you know, if I was to do it all again and see what retail we're going to end up getting there, I probably would vote it down, because, you know, there's only limited space left for Wooddale for this retail space, and I agree, maybe it won't work for retail, but we lose on residential. We lose big time. I would rather personally, if it couldn't be sold for retail, it's better to have an industrial building there. At least with the industrial building there, which Gallow's familiar with, we're not going to have impact on the schools, we're not going to have impact, the same impact on city services, we're not going to be over there plowing the streets, replacing the streets, replacing the water mains down the road. And with respect to townhouses, and they say typically they don't generate kids for schools, and initially the school board has told me that they don't see a lot of kids coming from the Polte site, but that's short-term. There's a lot of investors over there, there're going to be renters in there, they could get a big influx of children down the road, so, I mean, it's not the fact that it's, the amount of density is too high, but even if it was one single-family house for me that's sitting there, I'd say it's too dense. The zoning should stay B2, it's got to give its course at that, and I don't think there's been enough effort yet at that point to try to get retail in there. And I'm not talking about retail where you lease back and have somebody come in there, it's got to be retail sold, and if five, 10 years, I won't be on the council, but if at that point, it's not going, then I think you come back to the council and say, you know what, these are the efforts we made at B2, and we never got it done, at that point, we allow us to go back to the industrial. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Well, thank you for the presentation. Hopefully you got the direction, maybe not you anticipating, but you need.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it very much.
Next on the agenda is IML report. I'll start. Two sessions that, or two comments that I have. I attended the Legislative Committee session, and one of the things that we are most concerned about coming up in this next session of the legislature is the drop program, which you may have not heard a lot about yet, it's something we were able to kill off in last session with Speaker Madigan's help. Drop is basically that employees, be they firemen or policemen, can stop paying into the pension plan, start drawing their retirement, and their full salary as an employee of the city of Wooddale, do both at the same time. Obviously, that's going to have drastic effects on our budget, it's something we were able to do actuarial studies on and press upon the Republican and, and press upon the Republican and the Democratic leadership that that was not good for municipalities. And we were able to kill it last year, but we are expecting a new version of that to come forward this year. And we're already gearing up to fight that. That will be a united effort of DuPage mayors and managers, IML Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus. We're all united and organized on that. And I got invited by Comcast was there at the IML convention. And I got to do a little five-minute spot plugging the city of Wooddale. It's going to be rebroadcast on the Newsmakers program. Talked a little bit about Western Access and the economic development that we hope to experience in the next years. And hopefully, that'll be good promo spot for the city of Wooddale. Anyone else want to comment on the, Alderman Winger?
Thank you. Going to IML actually allows for a great networking opportunities as well as valuable insight in how other communities meet municipal needs. And, and then also, we're able to meet with municipal providers, which is really a benefit. And I'm going to give a couple of examples. Like, for, for example, the mayor today read that the ComEd is going to raise the rates and gave the figures. Well, in meeting with the vendors, there is a, there is a group called the Billion Rate Discrepancy Finders. And they will look at our rates and they understand electricity as well. So, once those rates come in, they're going to be able to know if ComEd is overcharging us, undercharging us, work with them. And then they also do municipal voice rates and they understand the tariffs. Like, for example, where I work, where the company I work for, we use a similar group. And it does save us a lot of money. And where this group, or at least the one that I know of, they make their money by, on a percentage of what they save you. So it's kind of like a win-win. So it was nice to talk with them. And then also, another good example is the brick industry group. And from time to time, we get a flyer for them, but on the weekend, I was actually able to speak with them and to learn more about what they do. And they actually provide a free service. And it's a planner and she will work with us, for example, with our downtown area redevelopment and certain areas on architecture and design. And of course, she's going to want to include brick in that because that's part of why they provide the service. But if you think about it, that in our town center, we're going to have brick within that design. So this could really be a valuable thing to use. And I picked up the applications as well, so I'd like us to look at that too. So to sum it up, this is a benefit and I'm, I'm happy I went. Thank you.